We had two meetings fit into one evening, two very important meetings, I should add. So I'm going to call to order the Monday, October 27, 2025 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Douglas, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can, please.
In one of my first invocations at this table, I referred to the words in the Pledge of Allegiance, liberty and justice for all. I say now, as I said then, "All" is not an ambiguous word. And yet, across our country, people are being denied the liberty and justice promised by the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments to the Constitution. My husband somewhat facetiously asked if we should carry our passports with us. I won't. I invite masked stormtroopers to sweep me up off the street and imprison me when I can't show my papers. Let's have that fight. But we know that won't happen. I'm a blue-eyed blond retiree. But if I were a citizen with brown skin and eyes and black hair, I would carry that passport, although from all reports, I could be roughed up, thrown to the ground, handcuffed, and taken to the lockup before any of those thugs thought to ask me for my identification. Where has this happened before? In Nazi Germany, where people with dark features were stopped on the street and asked for their papers. This is not the country that my ancestors fought to create, a nation conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal. As the New York Times Editorial Board wrote, "The use of racial discrimination in law enforcement should be an affront to all Americans. What separates democracy from authoritarianism, the rule of law from lawlessness, and a decent society from an indecent one is not just the goal, but the process. The government can and should reduce illegal immigration, but it should do so in a way that upholds American ideals." Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under one liberty and justice for all.
Indivisible.
Right. With liberty and justice for all. I got the part right.
Well, in some irony, the word indivisible in a divided environment, and thank you for that, Commissioner Douglas, because my parents, although they're in their senior years, feel it necessary to carry their passports with them in their naturalization papers. The fear is real for everybody. Okay. So, we have some presentations tonight, ten from the top. Mr. Gatto.
Sir. Tonight's ten from the top, my ten minutes to give a brief slideshow on updates that I think are pertinent for the public. Beginning one, obviously, leading off with the general election, just a couple reminders on some basic points for Election Day coming up. We, of course, do have early voting that is in process right now, and that is available through November 2nd at the Senior Center, at the hours and location cited. Absentee voter reminders are also there, and of course, contact your city clerk's office if you have any questions about the voting process. We will be, Melanie on the spot for the next two weeks. That was the substitute for Johnny on the spot. Lafayette lights up. We are happy to say that the LED conversion for the Lafayette garage has been completed. We had received several comments over the past year about some visibility concerns and some lighting concerns in the garage, so credit to DPS for identifying the solution and pursuing it. That is, that is in effect as of last weekend. Much approved, if you haven't seen the before shots. This week in parking, the Communication Director presented an update to the DDA Board about parking communications. We have several updates that are going to be ramping up as we communicate more information about the system turnover. As a reminder, we will be turning down the MPS Parking System, which is the current system, and on January 1st, the new system will be in place, that is, the Flowbird Parking Pay Stations. We'll also be implementing the Park Mobile App, which allows for mobile pay and text-to-pay services. So the service will be substantially approved, but you'll start seeing some activity when we install these pay stations as we get closer to the holiday season. So we're ready to start up on November, on January 1st. So in anticipation of that, you'll start seeing weakling parking communications. That's us trying to be proactive with, with how to communicate to the public about the transition. It is quite a complex one. Downtown Dollars dishes $50,000 in September. This is a great, fantastic story to uplift. So it's parts of the Arts and Beats and Eats special event, the DDA allocates a certain amount of money, about $75,000 this year, to be transformed into gift cards and then given out during the festival to event goers, with encouraging those event goers to come back and patronize the small businesses who are part of the project over the next three weeks. So, statistics, here's some really good data from the Isaac Kramer, new DDA Director. He presented a 61% redemption rate. That's fantastic. That's almost $50,000 of DDA money reinvested back into the downtown in the month of September. There's a list of participating businesses who all benefited from those gift cards coming back into their store on the bottom. Those are our top 20 gift card businesses, business recipients. So excellent work to the DDA, really fantastic example of the Yfty Downtown Gift Card Program, and I have heard since then that we are actually one of the more popular downtowns for the Yfty Gift Card Program across the nation. So we're performing really well on there, something we want to uplift. Claussen Park ribbon cutting is canceled. If you're going to join us for tomorrow, you can stay dry because it's canceled because of rain, but that doesn't mean we should forego reminding you about the importance of the improvements. So we do have a new youth baseball field that actually involved moving the field location to a better location. This improved the earthwork and the sightlines connecting to the new swings and shade structure and seating structures available at the other side of the park. Ultimately, accessibility and connectivity was improved for the park and the neighborhood, which is a priority for the Commission. And always a reminder, this was paid for with federal funding using the CDBG program. That program is at risk with the federal government talking about eliminating the CDBG program, which would take away a substantial amount of funding that state, that city, villages, and townships all benefit from. This is a great example of us using that funding to reinvest in the community. October is police training time, and, and I'd add fire training time, it's public safety training time. I mentioned this, I make a point of mentioning this, because we have a very busy special event season for the summer. A lot of our officers are working around the clock to support our lifestyle and our great wonderful events. And on top of that, when the summer ends, we go right into training season, and that is a heck of a month. So I just wanted to uplift some of the training behind the scenes. These are the things you don't see, but it's the things that we do to be a ready and accredited department, and it's an extraordinary effort. So we have classroom topics, as stated, patrol officer training, and then the Fire Department also has 400 hours of fire and EMS training in addition to all the public, all the police training. So shout out to public safety, it's a major investment in ongoing education, and it is a credit to the accreditation that we have and that we hold. Growth to celebrate in Royal Oak, Ludwig Plus is moving their headquarters to downtown Royal Oak. They're a women-owned brand actualization and business acceleration ad agency, really good marketing firm, is the way I'd shorten that. They are, they moved their downtown headquarters to Seventh Street, which is fantastic. They're holding a lot of good positive press event, and I believe they have a ribbon cutting scheduled for October 28th. So that is a fantastic message that we want to send about businesses coming down and growing in Royal Oak and choosing Royal Oak as a place to expand. So credit to everyone, credit to the community, that's a good announcement to make. More growth to celebrate. Glowabi also is one of our more interesting stories. It's a startup in Bamboo. So we have a small business incubator called Bamboo Downtown, and they incubate a lot of small startup spaces, so it's a shared office space. They are at 85% leased rate, which is a fantastic rate for a small business incubator, and one of those businesses is Glowabi. They've recently transformed from Salt something else, I can't remember the name, but I can't remember, that's probably why they transferred their brand. But Glowabi is the world's first personal AI social network. That is what they're marketing, so they're really kind of on an emergent niche market that is growing, and I think that's a really exciting thing for Royal Oak to announce and be a part of, that we have a successful emergent business who's starting and celebrating. So they are, if you go to that website, you can try, if you want to, you can try to sign up for their early adoption program. So they're offering a free enrollment if you want to be a user tester for this service. And so they had their announcement on October 20th. We were there to support that announcement, so thanks to the DDA for bringing this to our attention, and thanks to the DDA for participating and advocating. And finally, Veterans Day celebrations. Just a reminder, as we come into November, we have Tuesday, November 11th, we have several ways that we celebrate our veterans, beginning with November 8th at 10:00 a.m. Just a reminder, Centennial Commons, there is a ruck, a 2.2-mile march of solidarity, which benefit, the Food Pantry stated. The actual veteran service is at 11:00 a.m. at Centennial Commons. A point of note is that this year marks the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War, and there will be commemorative pins given to those, those in attendance who served. And finally, the Phase Two exciting, the Michigan World War II Legacy Memorial, also on November 11th, at 1:00 p.m. at Memorial Park. So you'll have to hitch a ride up there quick, but they are going to be honoring our vets as well as unveiling the full-size bronze Rosie the Riveter statue, which is a really exciting addition to the park, and just one more thing that makes Royal Oak a place to celebrate. It's unique to the area and unique to the state. And with that, that is my time from the top.
For the Veterans Day celebration, I think last year, we did the Operation Greenlight, or we had greenlights. Do you know if we're doing that this year?
I don't, but I will follow up the staff and get that answer.
Okay. Oh, yes, we are. Judy.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just had one, not to put you on the spot. When we talk about the Downtown Dollars, do we have any idea what the multiple of that is in terms of economic activity? Meaning, those are the dollars spent, but I know people might take...
$20 into a store and spend 150, or they might spend 25. Do we have any idea what that multiple is, any economic models, or is that something Yfty does for us, or that we're trying to, the DDA has a handle on?
I will have to pass that back to the DDA Director, but the DDA is making a point of making data-centric decisions right now, so they're actually aggregating a lot of this data. I'll ask one more question to ask.
Yeah, I figure it's really hard to get, but if there is some nifty tool out there that allows us to calculate that, I think it, you know, it's way bigger than the $50,000 that was spent in the community. And the future, because the touchpoints, people come to our downtown, they come back again, and then they come back a third time, and they're hooked. I mean, that's the old restaurant adage, right? If you can get a customer to come three times, you got a customer for life. So really interesting, when you start breaking it out, the importance of a program like this and the touchpoints it brings into our community. All right. Thank you, Joe. All right, that brings us to item five, approval of the agenda. Commissioner Cheesel.
I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Cheesel, a second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion on tonight's agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. That brings us to public comment. Before we start, just a few remarks about public comment. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is a time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issue, whether or not it's on the agenda. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. The City has made it easier for you to request a follow-up on an issue or leave public comment by simply scanning the QR code you see displayed. Please make sure you double-check your information for accuracy, as staff may utilize it for post-meeting responses. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, then come up to the podium. For the record, we do ask you to state your name and your address, and please be mindful that the City Commission wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight. So comments are limited to three minutes per person, not per topic, and we do have a timer up at the podium to help you keep track of your time. Please note, the City Commission typically doesn't respond directly to questions during public comment, but we do write down those questions and ask when the topic comes up. However, if your question doesn't have anything to do with an agenda topic tonight, please make sure that you either use the QR code, send us an email, or as a, I think the best resort, but I'll say last resort, if you can contact Ms. Judy Davids with your information, we'll try to get an answer to you as soon as we can. And our staff, I see here that they take copious notes on what's being said and have direction to follow up as necessary. So with that, who's first tonight? Yes, sir, in the front.
Charles Samschina. This Commission has abandoned all ethical standards when approving the rezoning for Sheets. Dave Woodward's payday appears to be more important than public safety for residents. You replaced the original staff report for Sheets with an altered document that's deceptively similar while omitting important words describing a danger to public safety. You deleted the primary reason to deny Sheets the rezoning. You removed the words describing the location as "one of the most dangerous and traffic-congested intersections in the city." This removal happened near the same time that the Woodward-Fournier and Royal Oak public corruption scandal and Charter fishing celebration was prominent in the media. Altering a critical document has grounds to rescind the approval for Sheets. The vote at the Planning Commission, City Commission, and the input from residents at the public hearing are all flawed without this info being in the memo. After being alerted to this issue by Planning Commission Chairman Gary Casada, I used the original link and the unaltered memo did not appear. The following message appeared that the document had been removed, changed, or unavailable. But using the current link, a deceptively similar memo appears without the most important words about the intersection as "one of the most dangerous and traffic-congested intersections in the city." This demonstrates an intent to deceive the public because it looks identical, except for deleting important words. Then the Commission conducted discussions as if traffic was a mere inconvenience, instead of focusing on a real public safety danger that would be worse after adding thousands of cars entering and exiting the intersection. The review of the flawed Sheets traffic study was very limited and not a substitute for a full analysis of public safety issues raised by the nearby residents. The Commission completely failed to conduct a community impact study to determine the negative effects to those nearby. I cannot find a written document signed by an expert city department head, such as the police or fire chief, who will state in writing that the neighborhoods will be made safe. Apparently, no one wants to be accountable for what may happen in the future. What about the cut-through traffic in the residential neighborhood and near the elementary school? Ambulance response times, police response times when there's an accident or traffic jam? Will there be increased crime nearby as seen at other Sheets locations? Any other city would do an in-depth study based on real facts and require written opinions from experts and public safety officials. Rescind this approval and start over with a legitimate process that gives residents a fair chance. Tell Dave Woodward to refund the money that he took from Sheets.
Okay. All right, who's next? Mr. Asher.
Hello. My name is William Asher. I live at 1003 Irving Avenue. My understanding is that the Commission will be making a decision next month about the berms near Lawson Park. I just wanted to remind the Commission about that and hope that you are starting to think about your votes on, on that matter. And my phone just died. Wait a minute. Here it comes. All right, it's back. The Engineering Office produced a thorough report on the status of the berms and the responses to a community survey. They recommended that the berms be retained. The Traffic Committee recommended otherwise, specifically that the city should consider removing one of the berms. I'm sure they had the community's best interests at heart, but I think their recommendation was faulty and hope that you will vote to keep the berms around Lawson Park when it comes up for consideration next month. I won't take your time now to expound on why I think their recommendation was faulty. I'll do that next month when you're preparing to vote. See you then.
Thank you, Mr. Asher. Anybody else wish? Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Harrison, Woodward Side Subdivision. Superseded agenda attachments are typically included with the agenda, and the revised document is noted as amended. I have now heard from two different residents that meeting agenda attachments regarding public safety issues have been altered prior to the respective meeting, and that the original document has been deleted. This is a true ethics issue. How does it happen, and who is directing that these documents be deleted and hidden from the public? Is it staff? Is it the mayor? Members of the Commission? You need to get to the bottom of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. All right, Mr. Gantina.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Woody Gantina, 1805 Greenleaf. I'm here tonight to speak in support of a couple of agenda items. You might be able to guess what they are. First is the RENO program. I just want to say a few words. When we created the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, and we set some pretty aggressive greenhouse gas reduction goals, one of the things that was very clear is that educating the community and our businesses was going to be key to achieving those goals. So I'm excited to see the RENO program come forward, especially in light of the federal tax credits going away. I think it's a great tool to not only educate our community on what's possible for them, to not only increase the operational efficiency and durability of their own homes, but also help the city with their greenhouse gas reduction goals. And then also, of course, the Library Solar Project. Extremely pleased to see this project moving forward. Again, establishes Royal Oak as a leader in sustainability in our region, seeing the first-ever municipal project getting solar in our city. But I'm more pleased about the, the robust and transparent vetting process that was in the packet. I was really pleased to see how they evaluated all the different vendors, and the preferred vendor that was put forward just speaks to a good process, and I think we're going to have a good vendor that will then spend, spend the dollars wisely. So good job, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gantina. Yes, sir.
Hello. Before I begin, may I offer a few photographs that will help illustrate my point?
Yeah, if you have exhibits, you can hand it to the city clerk, and she'll pass them down to us.
Okay. Thank you very much. Every morning and night, I have the pleasure of driving up and down the legendary Woodward Avenue from my home in Pleasant Ridge to work in Bloomfield Hills. Should I state my name at first?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. Greg Leschman, 30 Elm Park Boulevard, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan. Again, good evening. Every morning and night, I have the pleasure of driving up and down the legendary Woodward Avenue from my home in Pleasant Ridge to work in Bloomfield Hills. My profession is in real estate property management, so my eyes are automatically drawn to real estate assets. I see and watch with enthusiasm when new businesses are coming and being built, and unfortunately, watch as some businesses leave. In this instance, with the unfortunate closing of Casquale's Pizzeria at 31555 Woodward Avenue in the city of Royal Oak back in 2019, after 60 years of business, is the reason I'm before you tonight. For six-plus years, I've heard and hoped and watched for the new big-boy establishment, but this has not come to fruition. What has advanced is the slow deteriorating death of a once iconic, dominant, fun, enticing sign. This is the one and only reason I'm here. This is the one and only reason I'm here, addressing the distinguished city commissioners tonight. The acrylic panels are either fallen or sharply half-broken, letters are half there, metal edging is dislodged and dangling from the structure, the electrical wiring box is exposed on the side, and trash is strewn across the base. I'm simply bringing the current state of this roadside sign and its blight to your attention. AI overview of blight. Blight in a neighborhood refers to a pervasive state of deterioration, neglect, and decay that negatively impacts the aesthetic, economic, and public health of a community. It includes physical manifestations like abandoned and deteriorating buildings, vacant lots with junk and overgrowth, and a general lack of upkeep. Blight leads to reduced property values, increased crime, environmental hazards, and decreased community morale, creating an economic and social burden that is difficult to reverse. I felt so strongly about this, I contacted the city of Royal Oak government offices and lodged a complaint with the code enforcement department. This was in Q1 of 2025. With no responses, after repeated attempts, I reached out to the mayor and city manager's office and found the great Carol Schwanger, executive assistant in the office of mayor and city manager. Carol cheerfully acknowledged my phone calls and has persistently kept me up to date via email over the past six months of the myriad of city attempts at enforcing the sign violations. Building official Jason Craig, director of Community Development Department Tim Thling, city attorney Nick Grochowski, and I'm sure many others are aware of this plight of blight. At last correspondence, Ms. Schwanger on October 7th said the matter was adjourned for four weeks. I'm, I'm, last comment.
I'll let you finish your last sentence.
My question to you is this: Can you please help get the tenant Big Boy and/or property owner Dell Judas Investment Company LLC to clean up the sign?
Thank you. Thank you. Who's next? Mr. Asher.
My name is Alan Ashley. I live at Royal Oak Manor. I moved to Royal Oak here in 2016 of January, and I would like to, in 2016, the first spring warm day, I was excited to see downtown Royal Oak. Starbucks was crowded, there were baby carriages, people were out. Washington was bumper-to-bumper. People were having brunch at all the restaurants and all that. Today, that has completely changed. I do a lot of walking. I was walking up Washington, no traffic. Matter of fact, 25 people on bicycles were riding down. I was at Lincoln, I saw them coming down. They rode their bicycle in the middle of the street, on both sides of the street, right down, all the way down. It took eight minutes for a car to come down Washington. What I'm saying is, the policies of this commission has destroyed Washington. Arts Beats in Needs is a business killer. People don't understand, they think it's a four-day event. It's a seven-day event. When the promoter comes and says, "We've got great things, we're dishing out," I would like him to go to every damn business and talk to everybody there. The salons, the restaurants, everyone. In those salons that people don't know, every one of those people, hairdressers or stylists, colorists, pay for those chairs out of their tips. That's what they're working on. They lose money as soon as that P-7 or the large municipal parking between 526 and Oakland Community College is closed. That's on a Monday. It won't come back until Tuesday or Wednesday. So, in nine days, we have an election. By re-electing the same people and adding people of similar faith to this commission is really the definition of insanity. And the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results when you get the same results. So in nine days, I hope people of city of Royal Oak will think about who they're voting for, because downtown Royal Oak is dying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Asher. Just a reminder, elections in seven days. Don't show up late.
I've already voted, sir.
All right. Yes, ma'am, back there.
My name is Kaye Thomas. I live in the 4,600 block of Robinwood. I'm in the neighborhood that's affected by the Sheets development that was approved, and I'm representing some of my neighbors that are still wondering and concerned about the, the status of the development. We haven't seen any activity in the building, and I'm actually even more concerned now after several people got up tonight and feel that there's been a shortcut to the process in making sure that safety was the utmost concern when it was approved. I remember attending meetings leading up to the approval, and, you know, they, they kind of like alluded to, "Oh, we'll just add a left-turn lane for eastbound traffic wanting to get in." That is not physically possible if anybody knows that area. You've got a fence with the width of a sidewalk right against where the cemetery is, and on the other side, you have two sets of apartment buildings with the width of a sidewalk, and then their parking. You would literally be plowing into their front yard. All of the citizens in that area are still concerned about kids from the school maybe thinking, "I'm just going to go get a snack and cross the street." And that intersection, I drive it every day, and people in the far-right lane wanting to continue north on the other leg, if you're on Coolidge and you're heading north and you have to do that jog under the railroad tracks, people turn wide there every single time, every single light cycle. It's not hard, but they do it every day. It's, it is a dangerous intersection, and we just don't know how they're going to reconfigure. We're going to put a different light there. Is there a way that the citizens can get a good understanding of what they're working on? What safety concerns they're addressing to a swatch are concerns? You're saying yes. Where do we go do that?
You've got 55 seconds. I'll tell you after. I don't want to take away from your time.
I, I still can't believe the lack of concern over the proximity to an elementary school, because it doesn't matter which, whether you take the two streets on 14 Mile to shortcut the people that are going to get aggravated by the increased traffic, the backup, or whether you cut off Coolidge into that neighborhood, you are right at that elementary school. You are right at the backyard, their playground, their youngest set of kids' playground, right on that first street. Now, it doesn't matter whether you come in off of 14 Mile or off of Coolidge, you're right in their backyard. That really, really concerns me. It's where my daughter went to school, I was unpaid crossing out there. I saw the way people drive when they get aggravated. I'm, I'm all done.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Just, we don't typically respond to questions, but you asked a specific one. If you reach out to our Community Development Department, they can give you the exact status where everything is in terms of approvals and all of that. If you have questions about the analysis in terms of the engineering report and traffic, our engineering department can definitely get you answers to specific questions you have. Public safety, our police chief can get you answers as far as how the police and fire review these things and planning. So I would start with community development, and then any questions you have, they can feed them back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Heather Duñez, and my address is 1316 East Fourth. I come in regard to Agenda Item I. It's the MOU with Oakland County Health Department in support of the Harm Reduction Services. I come for a multitude of reasons. I will let the professionals speak exactly what all is involved with Harm Reduction Services, but as a concerned individual, I can speak from my personal experiences that addiction affects everybody in some way, form, fashion, and if you have a loved one who is affected by addiction, whether it be a family, a friend, there's nothing you can do or say that will affect their choices. They have to be able to make those choices on their own, and your hope as a family member is that they will be okay until they are ready to make that decision, and then those circumstances are in place to help them continue on in life. Harm reduction is so important to me because I had a brother, he was 35 years old when he took his own life because he could not understand his addiction. I had a dad who died of a heart attack at 44 years old because his addiction got the best of him. I had a mom who died at 48 years old because addiction got the best of her. I understand addiction because it surrounded me. The other hat that I wear that some of you know is I'm the executive director of the Welcome-In, and so the guests that I take care of them, take care of, some of them suffer from addiction. And my goal is to have these, all of the resources in place that will help to support them when they are ready to make that decision, and that we can help them along the way and keep them safe until they are, and provide a little bit of dignity and a little bit of hope while we do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Going once, going twice. Okay. We're going to bring public comment back to this side of the table, which brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish? Yes, Commissioner Collo?
May I make one quick public comment?
Sure.
I just want to highlight with the shortfall of SNAP benefits coming up next month, there's going to be some food insecurity and issues around the city. Two years ago, the Brownies down at Oakland Elementary went around and mapped all the little food pantries throughout the city and community for us, and we put them on a map, so if anyone is looking for a food pantry, try the stock or utilize, they can go to roaming.gov.lfp, and there's a great map there for resource for anyone. So that's a great project that they did. Those girls have now made it onto ROMs, but their legacy is everlasting.
Thank you, Commissioner Collo. Appreciate that. Consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Commissioner Teesem?
I'd like to pull I off.
All right. Let me just mark it. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So we have a consent agenda that consists of everything except for I. Does anyone wish to make a motion? Commissioner Hunt makes a motion to approve the consent agenda. Does anyone second it? Seconded by Commissioner Herzog. Discussion on the consent agenda. All right. With note, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Item I. Commissioner Teesem?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Fournier. I just, it's hard to top some of what was shared with public comment about this, but you all know, whenever I have the opportunity, I love to wear my public health hat, and I, my early public health career was working in HIV prevention, and certainly these harm reduction programs were part of the very important discussion happening at that time. As was mentioned at public comment, addiction does touch almost everybody, either because you face addiction yourself or someone you love, a family or friend have addiction. The harm reduction programs, such as the one on the agenda under item I, have been shown to reduce overdose deaths, hospitalizations, reduce transmission of diseases like HIV and Hep C, and they really provide an opportunity to continue to have contact with people who are really struggling and suffering with these substance use disorders. They help connect folks to different services like vaccines, wound care, Narcan training, substance use disorder treatment, and they're just, they've been in, harm reduction programs like this have been in existence for decades now, and so that means that there's a lot of experience where lessons have been learned and best practices have been developed to serve, serve people really well, serve people with dignity, while also maintaining really good relationships with the community. And so I'm really proud to have this on our agenda today, and I just, I will be offering my support for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Teesem. Mr. Grochowski?
Thank you. This is, just as a little background, there was, we were contacted earlier this year by Oakland County Health and the Welcome-In to discuss this potential MOU, and I would recognize there's a number of people here from both Oakland County Health that operate this mobile health unit and provides all these valuable services to vulnerable populations, and a number of people from the Welcome-In are here as well. So, we worked in collaboration with them and the police. There will be some training provided to the police, given the one legal issue with regard to this, but overall, the partnership, I think, represents a truly proactive and compassionate public health measure that aligns with the city's goals and connects our most vulnerable residents with essential services and health needs.
Thank you, Mr. Grochowski. Commissioner Teesem?
I'd like to move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Teesem. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Douglas. All right. Any discussion on this one? I'll just say, you know, good policy follows good programs, but it begins and ends with compassionate people that really, truly make a difference and aren't taking their eye off the ball in terms of who and how they're helping individuals. So I'd just like to offer a personal thank you to the folks out there on the beat in the field doing the work, and thank you for the commission hopefully to approve this program to get it going. So, thank you. All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. This brings us to item eight tonight, which is the 2025-26 Master Administration Fee Schedule Amendment for the Residential Enhancement in Neighborhood Opportunity, otherwise known as RENO, not Reno, RENO. Ms. Truba.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, last meeting, I presented on the new Reno program, which is Residential Enhancement in Neighborhood Opportunity Program. It is a new municipal program we're going to be offering, which incentivizes sustainable, affordable developments in our neighborhoods by offering qualifying projects, the ability to get their inspection, and permitting fees zeroed out through the program. So, tonight before you, I have a little bit about the Reno program. Again, that's going to be a lot of a repeat of what we heard at our last meeting, as well as a fee schedule amendment. So there is a slight amendment to the 25-26 fee schedule. It takes place on page 15 of the actual fee schedule. It's page 138 of the agenda packet, and you'll find there's a very small excerpt that we've put in there. So this is the actual amendment that we're making just to highlight that in an effort of transparency. It calls out the Reno program. It says that building department fees for activities determined to be eligible pursuant to the Reno program, as set forth through our focus areas and our guidelines and our application standards, would then zero out those permitted inspection fees to $0. So that's the actual amendment that we're asking for tonight, along with a resolution to approve the rest of the Reno program, and I can take any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Herzog?
Thank you so much, and we're really excited about this program. This program is designed to like incentivize the projects that will advance many of our plans, like the master plan, aging in place, and the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. When I look at the list of eligible activities, are there standards that qualify for some of these activities? You know, when I look at them, it's just kind of maybe more open-ended, and so if there are standards, will we be clarifying that for residents, and how will we communicate this to residents? I would hate for any resident to think that they're, they have a project that would qualify, but then at the end of the day, they don't. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is we have a community benefits plan, list, and we, we needed that list for a certain reason, and it only got us so far, and I think many of us have been frustrated with it or felt that it's weak, that some of the things on that list we're already doing, or a developer would already do, like put LED lights in or use high-efficiency appliances, and so the Environmental Advisory Board is re-looking at that list, and they're going out to different community, or boards and commissions. and they're going out to different community, or boards and commissions in our city and asking like the aging, or the senior, older adults. And the Human Rights Commission and the Arts Commission to find, to help make that list a little bit more robust and to help the city kind of like look at that in a different light. I know that this is a pilot, and I've just said a lot of stuff there. But could you maybe elaborate a little bit on what you're thinking about with this list?
Sure. So the eligible activities is not a comprehensive list. It's a loose list to give an idea of the types of projects that qualify. What's very important is the application process, which the eligible activities is a great place to go to see if maybe what the improvement that you're looking to make for your home might align with one of those. If the activity that you're doing falls into one of our major categories and focus areas, we encourage you to still apply. Now, each application is individually reviewed by multiple tiers, one within the building department, one within economic development. And then if there's any question about whether we're meeting a threshold or a standard, it would go up through our sustainability manager to get a second set of eyes on it. I think it's also important to know that the program, just because you qualify for maybe one area of saying retrofits that you're making to your building to include LED lighting, say you're doing a bunch of other improvements at the same time, it doesn't necessarily waive all of the fees for everything that you're doing. So it is activity-based. You have to have the application. In the application, there's a section where you're describing the work that's being done. It then gets reviewed through multiple departments in our, our staff here to make sure that that's something that's aligning. And if there's any questions, of course, there'll be a back-and-forth conversation. We don't want to limit and create too restrictive of a program. Again, it is a pilot, and so that can be adjusted at any point during the pilot program. It's set right now to sunset after two years regardless. So this is really just, the eligible activities is a way to get us started and to help introduce and talk about the program. But it isn't a finite list. And there is a multiple, you know, checks that you need to go through as far as these different departments to make sure that your project is truly aligning with our focus areas. And again, qualifying in one, you know, retrofit or focus area does not necessarily mean that your entire project is just gonna have zero fees. So it is specific to the activity that you're actually doing.
Any other questions? Okay, no question. Oh, Commissioner Hunt?
I think I just want a little bit more clarification on the last point that you mentioned. So for instance, if my bathroom's being remodeled, conversion from a tub to a shower, that of course would fall under the aging in place. But for instance, the, like the electrical inspection that would have to occur, would that not be covered? Like, I don't understand how a part would and others would not, or if it's a completely different project that you're talking about.
So each time that you're making an improvement to a residential area, they require separate permits. This is permit by permit.
Okay.
So if there's an electrical inspection that has to go along with the retrofit of the tub based on the placement of the fixture per se, I'm not a building inspector, but that would be, you know, something, say you're not, are you suggesting that there-
If I'm saying if there's like a bathroom Reno, Reno, and then-
So I think that's a perfect example. You're remodeling your whole bathroom. We know that your, you know, your tub, or your tub to shower conversion is going to qualify in aging in place. But your brand-new vanity that you're putting in is not necessarily. So when you go to pull your electrical permit, your new vanity wouldn't qualify as advancing one of the focus areas. So that portion of the fees that you would pay to the city would not be zeroed out. However, anything that's associated, the plumbing, anything that would be associated with actually converting the shower and the tub, that would be covered.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Commissioner Kolo?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you for being here again. So I just want to make sure I'm clear. This project is going to allow us to do more green infrastructure and improvements around our homes, right? It's gonna help people age in place like by adding ramps, and you can widen doorways, make kitchens accessible, right? And then we're adding affordable and attainable workforce housing, right? So if a developer comes in and has a great project, they'll be at an attainable level, there's fees that we can waive for that. Is, is that about the gist of it?
Absolutely. I think that that's kind of a great way to look at it. So for our residents, we think primarily improvements that you're going to be making to your home that are creating a more sustainable environment for you, EV electrification improvements, solar improvements, or some of the others that we've mentioned, or things that help age in place. It can be bringing your laundry room to the first floor, or making your kitchen more accessible. You know, shower, or tub to shower conversions, those type of things. Now, when we're talking about multifamily residential housing, so that would come through, they qualify for some of those components as well, as long as they're meeting that threshold. But again, we're encouraging affordable and attainable housing by having a portion of our application that allows a developer to go ahead and illustrate how much of their project is going to be dedicated to creating real attainable housing in the city. And that, through that determination, then a portion of their fees could be waived too.
All right. But at the end of the day, for residents, this is making it easier for them to be green, to stay in their house if they want, or just make upgrades that they need in their home.
Absolutely, especially for our residents that we have currently living. If you've got one of these great projects, you've been thinking about it, but there's so many barriers, you know, you have to go get your permit, you've got your fees associated with that, your contractor fees. This is a tool that we're using as a resource to help lower that barrier a little bit and maybe encourage some of these sustainable, green investments in your properties.
Great. Thank you so much.
Great. Anybody else? Commissioner Herzog?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Herzog. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Kolo. Discussion. Commissioner Herzog?
I think this is a great program. I think everyone's been really excited about this coming, coming to this table and get, and hopefully moving it forward. The Environmental Advisory Board has an educational program called Solarize Royal Oak. And it looks like there's about six solar installations that may be coming through the city soon. Maybe one of yours? And so that might be a real great potential for this program, and a win for sustainability goals, and a win for this program, and a win for the city, and a win for everyone. So I'm happy to support this program.
And I'll add a win for future generations, right? Because it's incentivizing the right things that will hopefully pay dividends for decades and generations to come. Commissioner Hunt?
I'm excited about the program also. And I just want to thank the City Manager's Office and the Building Department and all the staff who was really creative in coming up with this program and figuring out a way to tackle a fund that had an issue that now we're hopefully gonna lessen that issue with. So thank you to you and your team for, City Manager Gachau, you and your team for being creative and thinking outside of the box with this program.
And?
And Mr. Grotowski. Thank you.
I also think too, hopefully this gets a little press as well, because as we say, Royal Oak is not Coca-Cola. We don't take our successful recipes and put them in a safe. We hope other communities do the same. And what we experience as a win here, other nearby cities will also experience. So maybe, you know, when we host the next SACMA meeting or whatever, this might be a very interesting topic to put up there and show people how we did it, and maybe it works for them too.
Absolutely.
Good. All right, anybody else? We got a motion on the table? All right, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. All right, that brings us to item nine, which is the Royal Oak Public Library Solar Installation, 2024 to 2027. We have Ms. Dodge Frye here today. And I see Ms. Irwin here as well.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having me here today. I'm very excited to bring this project forward to commission. This is something that we have been working on as a city for at least a half decade now. And it's exciting to see our fruits finally coming to fruition. So I'm talking about our solar installation project. We proposed a turnkey solar installation that also included, through recommendation from our environmental council, our public education component. We received five proposals that went through competitive scoring in a collaborative process. It was myself, our library director, Sandy Irwin, and then our superintendent of facilities, Hugo Decandis. Also in that review, we had Nova, who is a consulting firm that specializes in this work. Also review on the technical side, just to make sure that we weren't missing anything in that area. We were very pleased that we both came out with the same candidate at the end. So we have the proposal to recommend Michigan Solar Solutions as our vendor for this project. There is a great illustration here on the screen. This will show the rooftop of the library. Those big green balls are trees, by the way. But it does cover the full roof, which has just been remodeled, so it also preserves the life of the roof as well, which is an added bonus as well. Timeline and details. So in our proposal, we have the project not exceed 400,000. We are just making sure that we are building some buffer room just so there isn't any issues that might come up with DTE connections and things along that nature. Once the contract is in place, we are expecting four to six months to completion. So we're looking at a spring operation, which will be perfect. They will get out there as soon as like actual insulation, as soon as the ice clears from the roofs. They're really eager for this. But the project will begin immediately after contract is signing. We have a really tight deadline of moving the permits and getting all those paperworks on deck right now. And Michigan Solar Solutions is very excited. They're already working with Nova right now to make sure that we are using the absolute best and most affordable equipment on the site. Return on investment is 10 to 12 years. And we are also gonna be utilizing some other funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds, and some grant funding that the library received in 2024. One thing to note, though, is that there are federal deadlines that are coming up for some of the federal incentives with solar. Right now, a few of those programs are set to end. So that's why we're being a little bit persistent on getting this out now. Though, right now, we are planning on to complete this project in the spring. You never know what kind of barriers might come up. And we just want to make sure that we're getting this on track so we can get the biggest financial benefit as well out of this project. Another good part, the impact. So first things first, we have a lot of things that relate to our master plan and our Sustainability Climate Action Plan. Eight of those goals in total overall. Most of them meeting with our goals, of course, to have municipal solar. That's one of our big things. To reduce our electricity bill, to promote clean energy. And then there's a lot of other things in that place, too. I also want to note that might not be a call that plan, but it does reduce our resiliency to the grid. And really kind of feeding back to it, making sure that we are being responsible sewers in that capacity as well, especially in our, in our area. It can produce 190 kilowatts at full capacity. We're looking at an annual savings of 20,000 for energy savings. Emission reductions are also wonderful. We have 200 metric tons of CO2 annually that we'll be saving, which once again, lays back to our Climate Action Plan goals. And we're very excited that we will be having a public-facing energy dashboard that will be in the library of, not the library, that will be in the lobby of the library in some capacity, we're still looking at exactly. But it will be showing real-time kilowatt hours produced in a fun little dashboard. There's also a capacity to do it on the online area, so we can have that tool available as well. So very excited about this. Another added bonus is we're gonna be looking at some of these additive incentives to support our green fund that we had put into place. And we're looking for that to fund future projects like this. So overall, this is a great win-win. I do want to introduce our contractor, Michigan Solar Solutions. John is here tonight to help facilitate and answer any questions. So he is also here. But otherwise, I'm very excited to bring this forward to you. I know it's been a long time coming. And I think the patience that we have endured has been worthwhile, since we have a great vendor. And this has been a very collaborative and wonderful project moving forward.
Great. Questions? I do have a question. I saw the payback says 10 to 12 years. Was that based on today's rates? Because my, in my, I'll say, vocation, we think rates are gonna go up significantly. I don't know how much in Michigan or through DTE, but you have a lot more demand with data centers and the cooling required with it and transmission required with it. So could that payback even be sooner, based on where we think things may go? And you come up to the podium so we can hear you on the mic, sorry.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. John Javaharian, Michigan Solar Solutions. You're absolutely right, Michael. That's been modeled conservatively with a 3% annual escalator for electricity increases. So through the 30-year lifetime expectancy, we're expecting just about $750,000 in savings for the city. But that, again, was that 3% escalator rate. So if we escalate any higher, that will only get better for the city.
Okay. Because I've seen, you know, demand go up. We've seen inflation go up every month since January. So I imagine this will, you know, this is a very good business decision on top of being a very good decision to support our goals as a community related to sustainability. That's the driver, but it's great that it's an awesome business case. Any other questions? Commissioner Macy?
Yes, one question for you. So there was talk about the federal subsidies, but my understanding is that those expire at the end of this year. So we, we're not gonna get those, is that right?
So some do expire at the end of this year, specifically 25D, which is the residential tax credit. This would actually fall under 48E, which is the commercial tax credit, which will be available until the end of 2027. The reason for the rush here today in terms of timeline is that we need to order some materials and land them in our hands to avoid some specific requirements as it pertains to FIOC, which is foreign entities of concern in terms of parts manufacturing and other things that came along with the big, beautiful bill. So that's the goal. It still will be available for elective pay, should we be able to get this in place before December 31st this year.
Okay, great. Thank you for that very thorough answer. And I want to thank you as well, and Director Irwin, of course. So when, I'm coming up on my ninth year on the library board. And when Commissioner Kolo and I started on the library board nine years ago, this was a very pie-in-the-sky idea to have to put solar on the library. We knew that the roof was ending its lifespan, and we're like, oh, what would be great is what if we could put solar on there? And it seemed completely out of reach. So kudos to everyone involved, including this body, which put that as a priority on the ARPA funding and put the money out there to make it possible. But also to Director Irwin, who has been shepherding it along as we get closer to this, to this timeline. And then also to Ms. Dodge Frye, as comes on and kind of just jumped right in to make sure that we were on track to get that and get that subsidy. So this is, I'm so excited to see it. I will be off the library board by the time it's complete, but I will come take a look at that dashboard, because I think that's a great community education piece as well that will really highlight what we've done and also help people get invested and involved in this project. I think it is really going beyond even the benefit that we're getting, like the actual financial benefit and the global benefit. It's also a community benefit of spreading that knowledge and understanding of how we can take steps individually and as a community to improve our world. So thank you so much for all of this and to, to all of us as well.
It's okay, you can thank yourself too, Amanda.
Can I make one comment?
Sorry, I was trying to, I was covering up a laugh.
Mr. Mayor, may I make one?
Yes.
May I make a comment?
Yes, please, Director Irwin.
Hi, thank you. This would not have been possible without the leadership of our city manager, who helped kickstart this, where we were floundering before, what are we going to do? I have to say that because it was a real struggle. And thank you for doing that. And to Devin, who just jumped right in and took this on. I needed to take a moment to just thank the two of you, because this would not be happening without the two of them. So thank you very much.
Wonderful.
I just wanted to uplift the educational dashboard that Commissioner Macy also mentioned. Folks might be walking by the library and not actually see the panels, but going into the library and seeing the dashboard. And having that educational experience will, I think, be just spectacular in the education of sustainability and what everyday folks can do to their own homes and, and just how we're like really prioritizing this in the city and, and that we care about our planet and our community. So thank you very much.
Okay. Any other? Commissioner Macy?
Move approval?
Motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Herzog. We're good. Thank you for shedding some light on this topic. I'm not feeling the energy tonight. What? That wasn't funny? Oh, man. Oh, man. Just gonna go home and listen to some AC/DC after this, man. It's crazy. All right. So we got a motion on the table. Any further discussion on this motion? I'll say really, I'd like to underscore the dashboard thing, too. We are finding, you know, generations, it's a struggle to get them, especially in some of the topics related to science, topics related to electricity, electrical, and having a dashboard there that even if a kid comes in and understands and sees the, maybe there's a finance kid that comes in and says, oh, my gosh, look at all the money we're saving every day, every minute, you know, a savings meter. Maybe it's something there that, you know, there's some books about how all of this works in terms of how, you know, light becomes energy. There's the environmental consideration. So I think, you know, my kids are a little older now, but, you know, going into the library and thinking about future generations and, and seeing this install, not just knowing like, hey, this is a really cool thing, makes us feel good and we save money, but what it means in terms of inspiring a younger generation, I think is going to be a bigger impact maybe than we're thinking. So really looking forward to that. All right. Call for the vote. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Good work. Thank you. All right. Item 10, which is request to amend ordinance, Chapter 740, Article 1, Appendix C, or Article I, Appendix C, interim discharge limitations to reduce pollutants from entering the sewer system. First reading, Mr. Yi.
Good evening, everyone. Well, those are a couple of hard acts to follow, but as a civil engineer and someone who's been in public works for a long time, I'm going to argue it equally is important.
It's not going down the drain.
Because the sewer backup is not something you're going to want to experience. But at the July 28th, 2025 meeting at the Royal Oak City Commission, the agreement with the Eganics to address the fat fog, which is fats, oils, and greases in the city's sewer system was approved. Part of this agreement was a comprehensive review and recommended updates to the city's wastewater ordinance to improve compliance and reduce the chances for backups in the city sewer system. Attached is a recommendation for those changes, along with the current and proposed sections of ordinance, Chapter 740, Article 1, Appendix C, interim discharge limitations. These changes will help reduce the amount of pollutants that are allowed allowable to enter the city sewer system. These pollutants have been causing backups in the city sewer mains, causing both hardship and expenses to the DPW, as well as potential sewer backups to the surrounding homes and businesses. The intent is to reduce the amount of pollutants entering the system that cause backups and mitigate the risk to the surrounding properties. So the, the recommendation from Eganics was to reduce the, the amount of fog, total suspended solids, biochemical oxygen demand, and phosphorus. And those will, were put into a limit that are, fits best practices in the region and will help to reduce the amount of bad things going in the sewer that will cause potential backups.
Mr. Macy?
Yeah, so those numbers went down a lot. Those were some big. So I, I just heard you say best practices in the region. So I just wondered like what, how did we come to the standards that we had before? Maybe you don't know since you weren't here. And then like, are these numbers literally the standards? Like now, there's somewhere you could go and say, this is what you should be, you should be at?
So those are the questions I asked as well. Because they did go down significantly. And the numbers that were originally put in there, I believe, came from Oakland County, and they were just kind of a generic, put together some, I guess, some numbers. When you talk to Eganics, they say basically, you're, you're unlimiting people. People are unlimited with those numbers. And they do a lot of this work. They're industry leaders. They work with a lot of communities. They put together a lot of ordinances, and this is what they recommend based on what they're seeing around, around the region. So yes, I know they have gone down significantly, but they do a lot of testing, and they have reduced fog and backups in a lot of the surrounding communities.
Okay, and the follow-up question to that is, given how severely they are going down, how is this being communicated to those who are probably the people who are putting them in right now to let them know the standard has changed quite a bit and we're going to be enforcing it?
So we have some letters to all the restaurants and food preparation places that, that, in the city that we're going to visit. We've let them know we're going to visit. I've been in the Restaurant Association. We went to the DDA. We've, we've presented this to anyone who will listen. And our next step is to start visiting restaurants. Our job or our goal is to educate restaurants on what they should be doing. If they follow reasonable standards and best practices, they won't have issues. So our job and Eganics' job, when they go to visit these businesses, is to bring them up to best practices and, and reasonable standards. And, you know, we're not interested in really going to the enforcement level. We're interested in educating and reducing through education process, making sure they're following through, making sure they're getting rid of their grease in, in the proper manner. I've already had a restaurant call me and said that they found the person cleaning out their smoker was dumping it into the catch basin, and they happen to be in an area where we have a lot of backups. So they've already called and identified some problems with the vendor that they're using. And so we're already seeing, you know, some people who are just actually paying attention.
Mr. Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Yi, thank you again for this. You know, following up on Commissioner Macy's question here, are we also going to look at the building code and how we construct restaurants? You know, there's a difference between if there's a grease interceptor that's at the basin of only one or two drains as opposed to one that catches the entire building. And you see substantial differences when you catch it, when you actually catch the grease. So is there a change that's going to be proposed that also goes, I'm not sure where we require the grease interceptor right now?
As far as from the building, from the building inspection side, I, to be honest with you, have not looked at the building inspection side or the, you know, the building construction side. But it's definitely something that we could take a look at and have Eganics, you know, even review that and make sure that we're following best practices and how we're making sure they're constructed in the first place.
Yeah, because a lot of restaurants will be constructed where there's an internal grease interceptor that is part of the three compartment sink. But you don't have one at the handwashing stations. You don't have one that's sometimes at the mop sink, which you should. But then you're not catching all the fogs at the same time because the example you gave of the Burke Bureau restaurant where they're dumping stuff down the drain, if they don't happen to catch one of the drains that are connected to an interceptor, you're going to lose a lot of those into our system. So I'd be interested to know if we can update our ordinance on that, too.
Great. Definitely a good thing to look at, so we'll, we'll take a look.
No comment. Commissioner Herzog?
So tonight is sustainability night. I'm so excited. As an environmental engineer, I think that lowering these detection limits is going to have a huge impact, not only on flooding, but water quality. And so this is, I agree with you in saying that this is equally important in, in our sustainability goals. So I'm also in support.
Mr. Douglas?
So this ordinance takes place in 10 days. Our, this is, what are the penalties for violations? And I mean, clearly, there needs to be a grace period here for education and for establishments to put, you know, systems into place to come to these very, as Commissioner Macy said, very dramatic reductions in emissions. So can we tell us more about that, Mr. Yi?
Yes, absolutely. So as I had mentioned, our goal is compliance and to work with our businesses. We're not interested in going in there and starting your right ticket and starting to do that, that type of enforcement. We want to work with people, educate them, teach them how to do things properly unless they are just completely ignoring us or completely, or not allowing us to, to do what, what, what we need to do, we're going to work with them. And we're going to make sure that they get into compliance or they're going to work, you know, we're going to work to make sure that, you know, we're educating and helping and assisting. And even if they're slightly over, we'll still work with them and teach them. One of the things that I've taken a look at a lot of the work that Eganics has done, and, you know, they've shown a lot of examples where they have brought some big violators significantly down, and they keep working with them. So they'll hit those businesses a lot more to keep working with them and keep getting them to come down. What they have told me is they have not had a violation in all the cities that they've worked with or had a, a food preparation place that has not worked with them to significantly and constantly improve and reduce the amount. So, you know, to be honest with you, unless they're completely ignoring us, I don't think we're going to look at hammering them on the exact numbers as much as continue, continuously show us improvement, that you're working towards it and that you're trying to meet our goals.
So and the ordinance mentions fog and suspended solids, which seem clearly to come from restaurants. But there are other things here, too, biochemical oxygen demand, phosphorus. Where do, what kinds of establishments do those come from? Also restaurants or?
Yes, they're, these are all issues with food preparation places. So they're all issues that, that we want to deal with and attack those types of businesses.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just following up on Commissioner Douglas's point, I think restaurants, they have the tools in place right now to comply with this. They all, by health department rules, have grease interceptors. It's just, are they using it properly? And are they emptying it as often as they need to? If it's, so the grease has to go down the right drain, and it needs to be emptied. It can't get overfilled because if it's too full, it would just flow straight out. So they're, like Mr. Yi, I'm assuming that's part of the educational campaign is making sure that the grease interceptors are right sized and that they can do that from day one, they can come into compliance. If they just drain a little bit faster or get a right size interceptor, they're out of compliance.
Correct, correct. And this whole thing of B O B is, is going to be GIS plotted. So we're going to know where the, where each restaurant is. It's going to show it within the sewer system. So we're going to be able to monitor things a lot more. We're going to request things such as receipts on getting their drains cleaned or their grease traps cleaned. So there's, there's a lot that kind of goes into the whole process and, and education and making sure they're following through on what they're supposed to be doing is all part of it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Colo.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Yi.
Thank you.
Mr. Colo?
Yeah, I move approval of the order change.
Motion by Commissioner Colo, seconded by Commissioner Cheesel. Any discussion on this motion? Anybody want to grease the skids?
This mean encircling the drain. Let's go.
You've trapped me into a dad joke cycle. So no discussion?
This is first reading.
This is first reading. So 10 days after second reading.
In case you're foggy on that.
Oh, man. People watching at home really cut the fat and get to the vote. All right. So I'm going to call for the vote. All who are in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So Mr. Grotowski will probably see this on consent since it was passed unanimously, and everybody's here this time, and we won't have to, you know, if it passes again at consent, we can always pull it off or whatever, but then 10 days from second reading, right?
Correct.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Yi. And I think working with our, with our food establishments to do this, I mean, I feel like I know a lot of our food preparation vendors, i.e. restaurants, in town, and they're good, solid people that, you know, certainly if there's something they can do better to prevent, you know, a problem for the entire community, I know they'll be on board. We've seen it with policing, same model. You know, it's not to inflict tickets, it's to get the goal done. And, you know, I think we've proven that in so many different arenas. So good luck. If you need any help, let us know. All right. This brings us to 11, which is approval of license agreements for parking in Rochester Road. Right away, we have our wonderful city engineer, Ms. Donahue.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Tonight, I'm here to present several license agreements for parking in the public right-of-way of Rochester Road. As you know, we're resurfacing Rochester between 13 Mile and 14 Mile next year, and we came to you previously to ask for direction on how to handle all these paved parking areas in the right-of-way that had not been previously licensed or approved. So back at the April 28th meeting, the commission conditionally approved the reconstruction of the parking areas as part of our road project next year, provided that the properties entered into license agreements with the city and that they cover the cost to reconstruct these areas. So staff sent out letters to all of the potential properties that may want to get a license agreement. We accepted applications back for those that were interested in proceeding and then prepared individual license agreements and exhibits for every property. We had some commercial, for the most part, and then one residential property interested. We met with several business owners. We did a lot of back and forth collaboration to come to a final design that met our requirements, but also suited the business needs. So tonight's resolution would give approval for, in total, its eight property owners to enter into license agreements with the city. And I'll just briefly kind of go over where we're looking at on the screen here. So we have three commercial areas, I'll say, and that's seven of the property owners or seven license agreements that you'll have. So at the top of the image here on the left is 14 Mile Road. Whitcomb is at the bottom of the image, so that's about a half mile stretch at the north end of Rochester. So we have three properties here, just at, south of the gas station up by 14 Mile, that all signed and agreed to license agreements. We have Amber Apartments here in the middle, near Ottawa Avenue. And then here at the southern end, quite a few businesses along there, that's the Green Lantern stretch, just for, so you know where we're talking about. There's two property owners there that signed for the agreements. Looking at the residential side, there was just one short block on the east side of Rochester Road between Genesee and Ottawa. All of these properties that are boxed have some either asphalt or gravel, some sort of weird parking pull-off area. We reached out to all of them twice because we did not hear back after the first time. We only heard back from one property owner in the middle here, who actually already has a compliant concrete pull-off pad. So we're just formalizing that with a license agreement, and he's basically all set. He doesn't need to enter into a cost agreement or anything with us. Everybody else will get a concrete driveway approach when we build the road, but any of these, you know, horseshoe pull-off areas, those will be returned to grass next year. I do have a...
You have a question?
Yeah, just a question.
Yeah, question, Phil.
So we reached out to them and they just did not reply at all?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So I do have, if you need individual plan locations, if you have any specific questions on any of the locations. But overall, we're recommending approval of the eight license agreements presented. Once MDOT bids this project, which will be January or February, we will then have the final costs for each property. And then we will come back to you again, and we'll start doing the special assessment process to set up their payment plans for a 15-year payback period. So that's all I have. I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I think I have the same question as Commissioner Colo, and I know there's nothing really more you can do if you've reached out to them twice. Just, I suspect, and I think you probably also suspect, that when you start to move these back to grass, you're going to get some homeowners who are like, wait, nobody told me. Did the letter say this will go back to grass?
Yes. We were very clear. We gave very clear deadlines. So like you said, it's not something we couldn't work with during construction. You know, if people are really upset about it, we can always come back to you with another license agreement and a cost agreement with these people. I hope we don't have to, but we don't have to close the door. Residential is a lot easier to work with than some of these other commercial areas where it's like three different properties that you're trying to please all at once. So getting those formalized, I think, goes a long way in this project, and we can work with people if it does come up during construction.
Okay, that is great to hear. Love always that you bring us these fantastic projects and that are flexible and work to make everybody happy. Amazing. Best engineer in the state of Michigan at least. So thank you so much for that. The ones that did not say anything, are they, so the duplex is already compliant?
Yes.
Are the others have to be, would have to be redone? Or are there some of them that are actually compliant right now?
None of them are compliant right now. Like they're right adjacent to the sidewalk, so we want a buffer from the sidewalk there. They're all either, I think they're all gravel except maybe one, maybe two. It's some sort of like crumbled old asphalt. So if they want it, we're not going to keep it. Like it would need to be rebuilt in concrete.
Okay. That was my question. And also, thanks for working, it sounds like kind of a lot of work with these businesses to get it such that it met our standards and met their needs as well. It's interesting because I do keep reading online that we in fact rejected their request to do this, but, you know, can't read, can't believe everything you read online. But thank you for doing that because I know it's, it's hard to, to balance out what we But thank you for doing that because I know it's hard to balance out what we need as a city and what perhaps the business owners need. So again, you're the best.
Thank you.
I'd like to remind Commissioner Macy that everything you hear and see online and everything you hear at public comment is 100% true 100% of the time. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, I recently read a quote from Abraham Lincoln to that effect. I just wanted, I just talked a little bit about process here. The wheels of government do grind slowly and very deliberately. And when the Engineering Department came to us with their report on this, however months ago it was, they came to us to point out a set of circumstances that put both the business owners and the city at risk and users at risk as well. And we heard a public outcry that we were, you know, trying to ruin, we're trying to destroy these businesses and how dare we? And yet in the same brought, Ms. Donahue described a process that is was available to us, the idea of licensing these areas. And we, as a city commission, said, great, go do that. And now she's done it. So government does serve the interests of the property owners and the people of Royal Oak as well in a way that keeps them safe and keeps us safe and benefits all. So to echo Commissioner Macy's comments, brava, well done.
Anybody down on this side of the table? All right. Nobody on this side? Okay, looks like I'm done directing traffic with initial comments. Commissioner Douglas?
Is this a move approval? Or will we be seeing these licensing agreements again? Because you have to set an assessment rate, right? How does this work?
So this will be just the license agreements. If you approve tonight, then they will go to the mayor and clerk for signature and then they at least have permission to do it. Then we will, once we have final costs, we'll go to those properties again and say, here's what the bill is going to be. You still want to do this? And if they do, then we will come and do a SAD, probably three separate ones for the commercial zones. And so I imagine that will be starting in March and as you know, that's like a four-month process, so we'll get it squared away eventually, but it takes some time.
Okay, very good. Move approval of the resolution.
A motion by Commissioner Douglas, there are second, seconded by Commissioner Herzog. All right, discussion. Commissioner Cholo?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Fair, echoing whatever it said about how amazing Ms. Donahue is in coming up with this solution. I wonder if we should attempt to make one more extension out to these three property orders, not because we haven't done enough, but I do feel that they're going to see this happen and be upset, like they're going to want this to happen. I wonder if we should send a certified letter to them so that they see it, they get it, we know they got it. So that when they do come back to us one day, you know, we know that we've done everything we could to get to them. If that's not hard to do, you know, if it's hard to do.
I, I think it's, and I kind of had something similar. You took it to the next level. I was thinking like, oh, should we just go out and put a door hanger on their door? Certified letter is not a bad idea since there's so few. We got to be careful though because sometimes it might affect, you know, we do something and it affects 50 properties or something like that. It's rare though with these licensing agreements. The only way I would say that that would be a good suggestion, I don't think we have to demand it, but like we wouldn't deny the expense if the city engineer thought that this might save you some trouble in the road, you know, spend the $5 to get a certified signature if you want to try again just to make sure that you're not dealing with headaches.
And maybe someone's not home, maybe these are vacant properties, maybe they're, there could be a lot of reasons, right?
They could be rentals too.
Yeah. So it'd be good just to get, you know, make sure that they know, because you know, this is a, it's a busy road and those turnoffs do our value for the residents who live there.
Actually, that's an interesting question. We send this, we send it directly to the property, right?
If we, if there was a property owner and a tenant that were different addresses, we sent it to both.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, there you go. Okay, good. All righty. So we have motion on the table, right? Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right. Those agreements have been green lighted. Tough crowd tonight. Oh, man. Item, item 12, request to establish and fill the position of Director of Parking. Mr. Gatcho?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Get situated in one moment. Yeah, this is, this is a piece of behind-the-scenes changes that are occurring to kind of echo or mirror the forefront scenes that are changing. So in the forefront, we all recognize that we're transitioning away from MPS to flowbird pay stations. You're going to see those physical changes as you've already seen that with Washington Street. So there's a number of changes in how the system will operate, how the system will appear and how we'll communicate those things. And then, of course, like most downtowns, we're still rebuilding parking revenue performance post-COVID. How's the, how's the business situation changed and the downtown situation changed? How's habits changed with downtown parking systems? And of course, we'll have to think about what this looks like shifting away from MPS into a brand-new revenue model because the revenue model will change because the system has changed. So the management model also needs the same refresh. This is what's behind the scenes. This is invisible to the public probably. But there's three goals that, you know, we, when we looked at this, that we wanted to focus on. And one, we want to unify operations. That's, we want to unify our garage operations, our surface lot operations and our on-street operations. We have about 4,000 parking spaces to manage distributed across those three platforms. That's a substantial amount of parking spaces to manage. We want all them under one operation, taking direction and vision from one entity. We want to implement proactive facility systems and standards, putting in accredited system, proactive systems. When we're looking at how do we maintain all these things? Do we have preventative maintenance schedules? How are we attending to all of these things proactively to make sure that we're managing our assets ahead of time? And centralized budget and capital planning oversight. Those are all very important things. That's the global side. We might not think of a parking system needing that, but it is a system that has four parking garages, some of which are still earning debt service. So we have to think, we have to take a long-term view on parking, like any other business entity. So I threw together just an illustrative example of the current organization chart, if you will, for the parking system. So we have three general service branches. Their responsibilities for the parking system are kind of distributed across three departments based on their areas, general area of interest. So we have, of course, the police department. They have a parking enforcement division, PEO, if I use that acronym in here and I didn't define that, that's Parking Enforcement Officer or official. So we have 12 PEOs within the division. They currently are responsible for everything. I call it citation management, but everything involved in the citation process and the enforcement process of parking. Of course, they're also our liaison to the court. When those citations are presented to the court, they'll be, they're issuing appearance tickets, so they take the responsibility with that. They also provide customer service, permit support, vendor management, special event permitting, parking enforcement, budgeting. They do a lot of other things within the parking system above and beyond parking enforcement. So a credit for them, they're really doing a lot of work. The DPS, we have three parking facilities maintenance officials assigned to respond to maintenance needs in the downtown parking system. They take direction from a DPS supervisor. And then, of course, our treasury really focuses on payment processing, security, protocols, finance reporting, reconciliation, and of course, the budget admin support during the budget process when we have to present a budget. They're pulling those numbers together behind the scenes. So the current system, as I just described, is kind of listed on the left. What I'm looking to do is propose a central ownership model. So I really am looking to establish that, that global strategic sense who's kind of looking at all those operations that we're unifying under one umbrella. So the proposed system still has the police focused on what they need to be focused on, and that's parking enforcement, the service, their court relationship. And of course, they're always going to be involved in special event permitting because it's a robust process that requires their attention. The treasury is also going to continue to collect and process payments. That's what they do, that won't change. The parking director, though, is going to, that's where we see a little bit of a change. You see budget and financing, capital planning, ownership, so being responsible for taking that six-year capital plan look when we're going through the CIP process and owning that process for the parking system, taking into account the service lots, on-street needs and the garage needs. That could be from simple painting of, painting of structure lines to actual major projects like a lighting project that we just saw for Lafayette. Our goal is to be proactive and make sure that we're registering those needs and we're planning for those needs proactively moving forward. You see policies and procedures, so making sure that we have consistent policies and procedures we'll be executing, not just on the maintenance side but on the customer service side, on the DDA business liaison relationship side. We have a really important opportunity to have a service representation for the DDA, for our downtown businesses, that really focuses on how do we get into the businesses, get engagement on the parking system? Do we have communication needs and marketing needs for employee permitting? Do employees know how to use those permits and where they should be parking or they shouldn't be parking? And do we have the systems in place to really optimize those communications, to make sure we have a responsive parking system? And then, of course, contract management, which dovetails into the next change. So the DPS employees, I'm working with Kevin, they're actually being reassigned to city-specific work, so less about the parking system, more getting back into the nuts and bolts of DPS, supporting our residential services and commercial services outside of the downtown, outside of the parking system. In lieu of that, we certainly, we have a RFQ out right now for parking management services. So that's for a parking management company for downtown of our size, that's fairly typical. And we have quite, quite a lot of interest so far. That process closes towards the end of November. So there would be an outside review and our parking consultant Dixon Consulting is the lead representative consulting us on that search. And they helped us develop the RFQ and the competencies based on national standards. So the parking director would be responsible for overseeing the standards of that contract. And that contract will be doing the revenue collections, will be providing the customer service on the ground, will be implementing those policies and procedures that the director's going to establish. And the director is responsible for holding them accountable to those standards. Permit management is something I think I'd like to build out with the director. And the permit management program should be implemented by the parking contractor. You also have maintenance and cleaning. Cleanliness is a really big issue. We want a daily presence out there. We want to be proactive again of taking care of our assets and making sure that that care is reflected in the service. And vendor management, of course. So the new model, a lot of words on the bottom, but if you could look at the flow, the police are still, you know, owning the parking enforcement side, everything that we discussed, but we're carving out some of the vendor management and some of the service side and that, we're going to shift that over to their operations and that's the director of parking. So I don't know that the police department needs to worry about DDA business employee permits. I think that could be a program that is managed by a central entity. That's just an example. So that's, we're trying to focus and isolate some of those competencies. And so the director of parking is going to see the business side of things, but also the, take the long-term approach and take central ownership over that budget. They'll be reporting to the city manager's office. And then the treasury, of course, retains their role as well. They'll be processing all those secure payments as presented. So end goals align up, the outcomes line up with our goals at the beginning, which is unified leadership structure. We want to connect daily operations enforcement and service standards, unifying our three major components of the system and establish central accountability for long-term planning, budget, capital, debt service, downtown support. As a reminder, the auto parking fund is created by ordinance, so all those parking fees are required to be spent to support the needs of the parking system. This is a need of the parking system. So this full-time position is funded through the parking fund. It is not funded through the general fund or taxpayer dollars. We're looking for professionalism. There is accreditation for parking professionals. There's also a professional association, the International Parking and Mobility Institute, IPMI. They provide professional training and certifications on an annual basis. And so I'll be looking for that accreditation because that professional standard meets something to us. And then experience, of course, a minimum of five years of municipal parking system management. Royal Oak has a robust downtown. We have four garages, 4,000 spaces to take care of and a lot of businesses to take care of as well. So we're looking for experience. And with that, I can take any questions. Here's just a sample of priorities on the horizon that I would assign accountability for this position coming up.
So I imagine, Mr. Gatcho, part of this deal or part of the responsibilities for the parking director would also to collect and look at all sorts of data to be able to make our system not just efficient, but work for the people that are using it.
Yes, and the parking system especially, the new system that we're generating produces a lot of data.
And I imagine we'll have a lot of micro projects associated with that, like where do we have blindsides? Where do we need help? Where do we need security? Where do we need, you know, what are the business owners saying? How do we do parking validation? All of these things and bringing best practices in, but also making sure that it's boots on the ground, talking to the users and the benefactors of the system.
Yes, that's correct. We have, you know, parking occupancy studies we can get from the use data from the system, actually. We can do, we can do area heat mapping. We can do analysis of peak time, you know, based on what side of town you're on, what structure you're on, what lots you're on. So we can get a lot more granular in the analysis. Once we implement a robust employee permitting program, you can kind of see the activity of where employees are parking and when they're parking. And all that stuff feeds into better policy for us. It just makes us more proactive. But you need central oversight for that.
Ms. Cholo?
Thank you, Ms. Fair. I just want to double check too. So this is being paid for by the parking fund itself, correct? Which is a, which generates revenue from the parking system?
Correct, that's an enterprise fund, so the funds revenues raised are accountable to support the system.
And if there's a shortfall in that fund, is covered by the Downtown Development Authority, correct?
The DDA is responsible for a portion of the debt service, which is a substantial operating cost for the fund.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Herzog?
And what is the timeline for filling this position?
We will post the position on October 29th. The recruitment will be posted in November and we hope to have an interview process. So my goal is to go into January with someone who has experience with this system that we are implementing and can help expedite our learning curve.
Remind me the size in terms of revenue of our parking system?
Who are you going to ask that? I think we're close to, I think just shy of $4 million.
Yep. So, I mean, you have a $4 million business that has significant capital in terms of parking garages, meters and strategic significance to our business owners and to our visitors and to our residents who use the downtown. And we've never really before had a dedicated person managing that to the, to the benefit of those groups. It seems to me it makes sense. It's coming out of the parking fund and a parking director will improve the experience for people visiting our city. And I think that's a legitimate expense to make it a better experience parking in our downtown, which in turn benefits our businesses, which in turn benefits our neighborhoods and, you know, all the value the downtown brings to our residential part of our community. Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, and I like the accountability of this. We've had so much of this function spread out over so many different departments. Here we resides in one person who reports to the city manager. And I will say that, so we did something like this when we approved a position of a facilities manager for the city. Again, we had distributed activities and no real oversight or, or economies of scale. And I think we made a good decision when we approved that position. And I think this is a similar decision where we, I think, will, will, will see savings or economies as we bring somebody in who can put all the pieces together and, as I say, be accountable for those decisions. So good job.
And you bring up a really good point, Commissioner Douglas. Another thing to be said about that is the rest of the departments can focus, right? It's not a distraction because sometimes it's not the amount of hours you have in the day to do stuff, it's the amount of 100 different activities that just distract you and focus you. I'm sure Mr. Yi wants to get up in the morning and not deal with parking and deal with fat birds in the sewer system. Just kidding, nobody wants to deal with that. And Chief Moore and his team want to deal with, you know, what they're best at, which is keeping us safe, not dealing with the administration of employee permits. So I think this has, you know, a financial benefit, but it also advances the ball on every other department that has to manage parts of the system today. All right. So what are we going to do? Commissioner Herzog?
Move to approve.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Herzog, seconded by Commissioner Cheesam. Discussion. All right, no, no discussion. Commissioner Cholo? Okay, all right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes? All right, very good. Well, that brings us to, by the way, parking jokes are too easy, so I just decided to stay away from that. Pull out of that situation.
Stop it.
So...
He betched something. No, there is no more backing.
Well, that's true. That's true. All right, so notwithstanding anything else for the betterment of our community, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, as long as it's enthusiastic. Commissioner Herzog?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Herzog. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. All right, any discussion on this adjournment motion? All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Those opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned.